I'd like to ask the Sergeant in Arms to invite the members in and close the door. Tonight, we'd like to call on Commissioner Irvin. He will introduce our Chaplain of the Day, and he will then lead us in the pledge to the flag, United States Flag, and the pledge to the Tennessee Flag. Commissioner, you're recognized.
I'd like to welcome to the podium Pastor Dr. Mark Moore of Third Baptist Church in Murfreesboro. He's been our pastor for 15 years. He's been married to his wife, Michelle, for 32 years, and he has two sons, Griffin and Penn. And if Dr. Moore come up?
I'd like to begin by sharing with you something that the Apostle Paul wrote to the church in Rome. He said, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. It is a privilege and a pleasure to be here and be part of this." And with that in mind, let me pray for you as we begin. Almighty God, you are a holy and righteous God, sovereign over your creation and your created ones. You have given authority so that we may choose representatives to govern, and we are grateful for a free nation and the institution of government. We are also grateful for our county and those who govern here. Father, I pray that you would bless them, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Give them compassion, cooperation, and unity as they govern, and help them use their authority to serve faithfully and promote the general welfare. Father, we pray this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Savior, who with you and the Holy Spirit, one God in Trinity, be blessing and glory and power and dominion forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The white stars on the field of blue, God keeps them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Members, before we do roll call, I want to let you know, you'll see on your left and right, we have new screens. Our voting board has changed. We're moved into the new digital age, and so we'll be voting as opposed to our verbal roll call tonight. We have a button that will be on your iPad, so I'll just say "roll call," and then our clerk will record that for the record. Roll call, members. I mean, has everybody... All right, punch a roll call.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk, 21 present. All right, Chair will entertain a motion, reading, and approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips.
Kethren, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted as presented.
Motion's been made to dispense the reading and accept the minutes. Second by Commissioner Irvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Members, next we have the presentation of the Three Star Governors Award. This was given to us by the state of Tennessee. Let me take a moment to tell you what this Three Star all encompasses. The Three Star Program is designed to focus on these areas identified as critical in ensuring the success of Tennessee communities: jobs and economic development, financial strength and efficient government, public safety, education and workforce development, health and welfare. Participation in the Three Star Program is based on the annual evaluation and activity plan. Local community leaders and joint economic community development boards are encouraged to implement activities that will impact the community's competitiveness in a global economy. Each year, Tennessee Department of Economic Development provides participating counties with a scorecard that documents progress indicators of the five focus areas that I previously mentioned. The indicators are used to aid the county in evaluating these key areas. The scorecard will document progress towards achieving the community goals set by the local community leaders and the J E C D boards. This is in recognition of 2018, which that for the previous commission. We have several commissioners and the county mayor, but this is the work that was done this past year for 2018. So it was a 17-18 year, but we accept this on behalf of the county commission, and I'd just say, job well done. Now, we have, next on the agenda item, we have public comments. Let me set the rules on the public comments. We have had four citizens that would like to come. Let me tell you the rules. You'll be able to come and speak on the issue at hand, which is the legal services agreement on the topic. You will be allowed three minutes to speak. So first tonight, we have Mike Linton. Mr. Linton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mike Linton. I live at 155 Spence Creek Lane here in Rutherford County. I am the President of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, and thank you for the opportunity of speaking with you tonight. Almost 10 years ago, Mayor Burgess initiated an evaluation of the way the county meets its legal needs. An ad hoc committee of commissioners was formed to look into the county having its own in-house legal counsel. But because of election cycles and other pressing concerns, this particular issue wasn't further addressed. Yet the system that the county uses to fulfill its legal needs has continued to be a point of interest. In the next several months, contractual requirements give the county another opportunity to consider alternatives to the system now in place. The RNA has looked into the way that counties and municipalities meet their legal needs and believes that a system using an in-house attorney and legal office would now best serve our county. Recently, we presented our findings to Mayor Kethren, and at the last meeting of the County Commission Steering Committee, the RNA was invited to present our findings to the committee at the committee's December meeting. We are honored by the steering committee's interest and look forward to presenting before the committee next month. We would like to emphasize that the RNA's interest is in proposing a system different from the one this county presently uses. This is not a matter of particular persons or organizations, but instead of alternative structures. Our concern is structural, not personal. Finally, we think it is always important to emphasize that people of intelligence and goodwill can look at the same information and come to different conclusions, and people who disagree with a particular conclusion are only awaiting persuasion. The data we've gathered over the last decade has persuaded us that an in-house legal team would be best for Rutherford County. We look forward to giving you reasons for agreeing with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linton. Next, we have Mr. Avant Lane. Mr. Lane, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
County Commissioners. It's an honor and a pleasure to speak to y'all this evening. My name is Avant Lane. I live at 221 North Highland Avenue in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and I want to invite all of you to the public, and the public, to the next month, December the 3rd Steering Committee meeting. The Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance has been asked to do a presentation concerning the legal services and the structure of the system we use. I believe this is a critical step for our county to correct the systematic problems that have plagued the structure of our legal services for some time. This is not something that has just popped up. Discussions and dialogue have been occurring for quite a while. An actual ad hoc committee was formed to address the problem. When the effort was started to create a legal department for Rutherford County in 2009, former Commissioner John Rogers, a local attorney, was a member of the subcommittee to gather information. This is what he said in a November 8, 2009, interview with Sam Starkard at the Daily News Journal. I quote, "We are really excited about the prospect of having someone that is solely dedicated to the business of Rutherford County. When the county was smaller, a part-time county attorney made sense, but now the county has enough legal business to keep not just one county attorney busy full-time, but more than that. So it is simply time to put people in place that are dedicated to the county, that were not competing for time with other clients." So that was pretty compelling. I also felt having in-house legal counsel was going to afford the county more proactivity to review the county businesses, and that goes from strum to stern, that I would expect an in-house legal counsel would have the ability, the time, the opportunity to be looking at reviewing our policies, our procedures, our manuals, our ordinances, our resolutions, and looking at those for problems before they arise. In the past, it seems like the county has so often operated on a retroactive-type basis. We recognize problems only when they come up, or are created, or are sued. This is not about politics or personalities. It's about the structure of the system that can allow potential ethical conflicts or abuses. In the February 2018 Steering Committee, the county attorney requested permission to hire an outside firm for county litigation case that was ongoing, indicating they only had six members of the firm and didn't have the time due to their other obligations. The Steering Committee subsequently approved. My point is, this can be a problem that can arise with any contracted legal services. And again, I state, this is not about politics or personalities. It has to do with the structure of the current legal services. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Next, we have Susan Allen.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. We in the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance hope you've taken time to look at the information we sent last week to all commissioners at the request of the mayor and steering committee regarding our research and background material for establishing an in-house legal department for Rutherford County. We have provided these comparisons of our legal services agreement to Hamilton and Sumner County, as well as the city of Murfreesboro, so that you can make informed decisions regarding the future of the county legal services. All three of the systems that were included include general legal services as well as litigation services, and those are reflected in their budgets. Since 2009, when this process of creating an in-house attorney began, our population has grown, adding more than 55,000 people, and we are on the brink of becoming the fourth largest county in Rutherford County, soon to over, surpass, Hamilton County. As the population grows, our legal needs will continue to grow, and we believe, as former Commissioner John Rogers said, and you just heard this, "It is simply time to put people in place that are dedicated to the county, that were not competing for time with other clients." We believe these comparisons provide a clear roadmap to how and why a change in the system of legal representation is not only necessary, but wise for the future of Rutherford County. You may have noticed in Murfreesboro's information, the statement that, and I quote, "The value that an in-house legal department adds to an organization is not measurable through objective data. Instead, subjective assessment of the benefits provided by factors such as the immediate availability of legal service, legal advice and guidance, an enhanced understanding of organization's culture, goals, and objectives, and true needs, participation in the organization's long-term plans, a knowledge and appreciation for the people and personalities involved in an issue, and a global perception of other activities and issues present within the organization that may be relevant to any given issue." Please take the time to really study the information we provided. We encourage you to call the attorneys and even commissioners of these other counties, as we have, for their firsthand take on why in-house counsel works for them. Thank you, and I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, same to you, Ms. Allen. Thank you so much. Next, we have Teresa St. Clair. You're recognized, Ms. St. Clair.
My name is Teresa St. Clair, and I reside at 2525 Retreat Court in Murfreesboro. Our legal department must operate under an agreement that makes it absolutely clear that the attorney's job is to protect the county and whose allegiances cannot be questioned. Our current LSA gives the county attorney insurance oversight and has left the taxpayers at risk by virtue of the fact that no one seems to be exercising a fiduciary role to the taxpayers. Cigna doesn't have it. They are the claims fiduciary. The risk manager doesn't exercise it, the finance manager doesn't exercise it, and the attorney doesn't exercise it. Mr. McCreery was given permission to participate in the employee benefits plan as an independent contractor, not a W-2 employee, and it puts the taxpayer on the hook for a share of his premium, but it's also adverse selection and not permitted under ERISA or any other insurance policies and principles. The risk manager who allowed Mr. McCreery to participate in the benefits committed the offense of adverse selection. In order to avoid adverse selection, we would have to change the plan documents after taxpayer approval to allow all independent contractors to participate in the benefits plan. As a 1099 independent contractor, Mr. McCreery could be working for any other client under risk factors we know nothing about, and we would have to pay for any injury or illness he is exposed to while working for another client. If Mr. McCreery were to have a debilitating accident or contract a life-threatening illness while working for another of his clients, Rutherford County taxpayers would have to pay out his disability benefits for as long as the policy dictates, and he could continue to work for any of his other clients while doing so. This is not the first time our employee benefits plan has been used as a charity fund, and I suggest it's time for an eligibility audit to be done to make sure we're not paying for friends of employees anymore. Decisions have been made presumably under the watchful eye of the county attorney to save money on insurance premiums that shifted and doubled financial exposure to the taxpayers while the insurance companies laugh all the way to the bank. This clearly is not an area of law that the lawyers, finance manager, or risk manager seem to understand. Every page of the current LSA contains an opportunity for the firm to enrich itself at the expense of the taxpayers, including the employee benefits. We need to start over again with a lawyer who works solely for the county, is eligible for benefits, and with a contract that leaves absolutely no room for conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Ms. St. Clair. Thank you so much for those comments, and this issue will be taken up at the next Steering Committee meeting for the December meeting. Next on agenda, members, is elections and confirmations. Elect notaries. Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your iPad, you will find a list of notaries for this month, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Phillips. All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item is to replace three people on the agricultural committee. This includes a farmer, a farm woman, and one county commissioner, and for those positions, steering recommends Mr. Charles Hord for the farmer, Ms. Cindy Ayers for the farm woman, and Commissioner Craig Harris for the commissioner. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is to make an appointment to the Community Care Board. Steering recommends Ms. Kate Jernigan, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for her approval.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And finally, we need to fill an appointment for the Office of County Coroner. Steering recommends Mr. Mike Nunley. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for his approval.
Motion for approval of the coroner and a second by Pettis Reed and others. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Yes, sir.
We also need to announce a vacancy on the insurance committee for the county employee representative, and then announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have the resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I've reviewed the items on the consent agenda, find all of them appropriate, and move that they be adopted and approved.
Motion and a second by Commissioner, Chairman Kush, to accept the resolution to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
The chairman has to be...
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
They can cast their vote.
They can cast their vote electronically.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote. Madam Clerk.
21 yes, motion passes.
Next, we have unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come forth, Commissioner? Seeing none, move in. It's not quite 6:30 yet. We'll go on to properties by standing committees, budget, finance, investment. Chairman P., you're recognized. We'll give you five minutes to get started.
Well, fortunately, we have a fairly short attendant. The first resolution that we'll be considering is a bit resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund is to be amended as follows. Increase expenditures for other equipment, $35,000. Decrease committed fund balance of $35,000. And this is to pay for a road tractor or semi where they needed additional funding. Next thing is to decrease highway assistant fund balance, and also for the public works for the committed fund balance. That'll be $51,755 for the highway, and for the public works part, $7,420. And then we're going to have increased expenditures, and this is related to the 50 cent per hour pay increase that was introduced. Increase expenditures for the admin part for assistant will be $1,035. For the secretary, it'll be $2,080 and related benefits. For the highway bridge maintenance part, for the foreman, it'll be $11,440. For equipment operators, $10,370. For the truck drivers, $10,385 and related benefits. The next section will be operations for the foreman. That'll be $1,040 for the mechanics, $5,195. For laborers, $2,080 and related benefits. And the last section will be of the public works for the assistant will be $1,040. For the foreman, $1,040. For the equipment operators, $3,120 and their related benefits. Resolve this 15th day of November 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Chairman Kush and Commissioner Dodd and others, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. On the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Board of work...
Board of vote.
21 yes, motion passes.
Motion passes.
All right, our next agenda item is a resolution to look at some grants. Now, when we looked at this in budget the other night, I was assuming that we were actually looking at the final, and this is actually an application, our request for an application to apply for these grants. So even if the grants are accepted, we'll see this again and vote on it another time. But resolution, whereas the Rutherford County Public Works Department has been made aware of grants through the Federal Emergency Management Agency to buy out property that has been impacted by flooding and desires to submit a pre-application and an application, and whereas the first grant is the Hazard Grant Mitigation Program, which is a statewide grant that seven property owners have been offered an opportunity to participate in with a county match of 12.5 percent or a maximum of $287,600. And whereas the second grant is the Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant, which is a nationwide grant that three property owners have been offered an opportunity to participate in with a county match of 10 percent or up to $82,850 maximum. And whereas if said grants are awarded and accepted, the Public Works Department would demolish the home, and the property would not be able to be built on again for the property owners that choose to participate. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit a pre-application and an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Grant Mitigation Program and the Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant. Resolve this 15th day of November 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion, second from Commissioner Irvin and others. We need to go ahead and take care of this vote before we move into... Okay, Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand this is just for the application for the grant, and we're not voting on spending any money tonight. But if this is not something that we're willing to do in the future, I see no reason for our departments to be working on this grant and apply for it if it's not something that we want to do. So let's just think about what this is. If all of these homeowners apply for this grant, we're authorizing the expenditure of $370,000 to purchase properties that we can never use for anything. We have to tear down the buildings at our expense. We have to mow these properties forever. We have to insure these properties forever, and we're going to lose the tax revenues off these properties forever. So it's going to cost us a lot more than $370,000 if we get all the grants and if we end up doing this with all the properties. If this was your business, would you buy 10 properties that you can't use and just have them as dead weight on your... and just have them as dead weight on your asset list? If this was your personal money, would you take 10 of your friends that are in a bad situation like this and put your money into buying properties that you can never use for anything? The answer to both of those is no. So why in the world would we use taxpayer dollars to do this? I just can't wrap my mind around how this makes sense. I understand that some of these people are in a bad situation. I get that. But if somebody's in a bad situation that you're trying to help, you can't make a bad decision or put yourself in a bad situation to help them. There are other alternatives for ways that this could be resolved. I just don't think it makes sense for our taxpayers to put them on the hook for this forever when there's other ways that this could be handled. If this was such a great deal for FEMA, they would put 100% of the money into buying those properties and take care of them themselves. But there's a reason why they don't want to own the properties or take care of them, because it comes with a lot of liability and a lot of cost. So I'm going to vote no on this. I voted no on it in Budget Committee. I just can't imagine spending this much money on these properties. And we have two schools we have to open next year. We have issues with the Sheriff's Department that we have to deal with. And we also have a fire department now that we voted last month to add 15 new employees to that, and they're going to need a new station. So we're going to need every dollar that we can get in the upcoming months as we plan our next budget. And I just can't see this on the high list of priorities when it comes to spending our money. So I'm going to vote no. That's why I'm not trying to be hateful or mean to anybody, but this is not a good business decision. These are properties we don't need, we can't use, and we can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I did receive from Phyllis Foltz over Public Works and Engineering said they had talked to TMA. This came in at 2:15 today. They talked to TMA as far as the application is concerned. They said that we've had responses from only four of the 10 homeowners contacted. Our intent, if the resolution passes, is to only apply for those four homes if the owners can provide required documentation so the county amount would be less than what is currently in the resolution. Chairman Allen, didn't we talk about the other night trying to find out if we could actually donate those houses, jack them up, and donate them to Habitat?
We did. I don't know the answer to that, but we did make that suggestion.
One thing I can add to that, I talked to some of the people over there, and what they're worried about is mold. And, you know, that's why they were suggesting that it completely be destroyed and then done away with. However, I tend to think that there at least can be doors and windows and things like that pulled out of those units. And something we still need to look into, and like I said, this is an application process, so we still have the time to do that.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, um...
Commissioner?
I don't think I have enough information...
Commissioner, stand up.
The...I don't think I have enough information on this. You know, the statement was made that these properties are not necessarily useful to us. I don't know. Some properties like this can be used 90% of the time for a pocket park or something like that, or green space. But I don't know. I haven't seen that. I don't know whether the Public Works Committee reviewed these properties or anything. If they haven't, then I would suggest that that be done, because I'm in the dark, is what I'm in. I'm in the dark on what we do. In some cases, this is really a pretty good deal. But I just don't really know enough about it. And so I'd really like to know more, so...before I vote on it.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that we have to keep up the perpetual care of that, cutting of the yard and grass and et cetera, right?
That's my understanding. Now, Matt is here, and we can suspend the rules if need be to let him speak. One thing I will mention to kind of address Commissioner Stevens, and Commissioner Stevens, you're exactly right. I mean, this is going to be money that we're laying out. The reason I voted for it in steering, and I voted for a couple of others, the only ones that have come back, one of them was on Twin Oak Drive, the other was off of Jefferson Pike. But these properties were put in place, subdivided, some, I think, as long as 50 years ago. And at that time, we didn't have good procedures in place, and there were some mistakes, in my opinion, made by the county. And we should not have, those should not have been approved. And I think one of them was maybe as late as 2007. I'm not sure about that. Matthew can probably answer these questions for you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask you to hold that thought, if you don't mind. Without objection, we need to roll, let's roll this discussion behind our public hearing, which were scheduled, we're a few minutes late for TV. So if we, and we'll call you right back up. So we're going to go into, without objections, we'll suspend the rules and move into our public hearings. Mr. Demasi, you're recognized.
Yes, Mayor Ketchum, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ketchum and members of the commission. We have two public hearings for you tonight for rezoning applications that were received and acted on by the Planning Commission back in October. The first is for Scott and Loretta Johnson, I believe. Just a second here, sorry. Yes, Scott and Loretta Johnson. This is for property located along Highway 99. The applicant is proposing to zone this property from residential medium density to commercial general. They're requesting to operate an aftermarket vehicle upfitting company. The existing mobile home, which is on the property, is vacant and will be removed. Materials submitted by the applicant, which are included with your agenda packets on your iPads, indicate they cater primarily to trucks, vans, Jeeps, and those type of vehicles, but are not necessarily limited to those. They're a retail store, but they also perform minor installation of these accessories. They sell items such as camper shells, safety lighting, racks, et cetera. Further conversations with the applicant indicate that in the future they may also wish to sell ATVs or similar type vehicles. That's the reason they're asking for the commercial general classification. Commercial general allows for motor vehicle sales, whereas the other commercial zones do not. The applicant's concept plan, again, is, along with their other submitted materials, is included on your iPads. Access will be along Highway 99. You can see on the concept plan that they are showing two access points, one at the existing driveway. The other proposed future access would be to the west, southwest of that. Of course, this would require site plan approval before the Planning Commission, so we would review any of the issues as far as access, landscaping, the performance standards, and everything like that. There were some questions at the Planning Commission regarding the allowable uses in the commercial general zone. There were also some questions regarding the type of materials, either new or used, being sold. The applicant did indicate that these are new part sales. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval by a unanimous vote. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none. Comments from the audience? Okay, we'll close. Next item, item number two. Is there any requests? All in favor of first item on public hearing? Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval with staff comments.
Approval with staff comments, second by Chairman Turner. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. We have one other public hearing for your consideration tonight. This is by Old South Properties. This property is located along Shelbyville Pike. The applicant is requesting to zone the subject property. There's actually three separate properties involved. They want to zone it from residential medium density, RM, to what's called a planned unit development. A copy of the Planned Unit Development Pattern Book is also on your iPads along with your agenda packets. There's, again, three parcels involved here. The entirety of parcel 1.07 is included with this request along with portions of the other two. The name of the proposed development is Woodruff Cove, which would consist of 200 lots, which equals out to be about 1 and 3/4 units per acre. And will have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet with a typical lot size of about 7,500. Home sizes will be a minimum of 1,300 square feet. Sidewalks will be on one side of the street, and the development will also utilize a centralized mail kiosk or what they call a CBU cluster box unit in its development. Homes are proposed to be vinyl sided with masonry or stone bases from the base to the bottom of the windows. And again, there's more information in the pattern book. And there's also, if we need to, we can bring up the pattern book on the big screens as well. The concept plan shows one access point to Shelbyville Pike, but also two proposed access points to the north and to the Davenport Station subdivision, which is currently under development. There's also two access points to the south for potential future connections to Crescent Lane as those properties to the south would develop in time. The applicant would be required to submit traffic study along with the preliminary plan should this application be approved, since Shelbyville Pike is a state/federal highway, T-dot approval is required for the access drive. Screening and buffering is not required for single-family residential subdivisions that join each other. However, no buffering, since although no buffering is being proposed, each lot is to have a separate landscape package, and there is over 50% open space in the development. There was some discussion regarding the timing of the proposed traffic signal at Rucker Road. Right now, there's, again, Davenport Station subdivision is currently under construction. Before Section 2 of Davenport Station is recorded, they will be required to post a bond for the traffic signal and related improvements to that intersection. There's also other development going down on Rucker Road. Not, well, they've submitted plans. They haven't started construction yet. But they'll also have some part to play in some of the road improvements to Rucker Road and 231 as well. Plans for the Davenport subdivision have progressed to the point that the proposed signal should be installed prior to lots being released in the proposed development. So as far as the timing goes, staff is more comfortable about this than we were when this was first submitted. After the, well, there were a few other discussions, excuse me, discussions on drainage for the development, coordination of the centralized mail delivery, and address identification on the homes. But following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this also by a unanimous vote. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Seeing none. Okay, we will now open the public hearing for comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the rezoning request? Motion to approve by Chairman Allen. Have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. We'll go back into Budget Committee, talking about item number L1B, FEMA buyout grant. Mr. Chairman, you're recognized.
To tell you the truth, I basically said everything that I had planned on saying. But if any of you have questions, we can suspend the rules and ask Matthew to come up, and he would be able to answer any questions you might have, so that's up...
I have a motion to suspend rules from Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Your comments, please come up. Just identify yourself for the record.
For you that do not know me, I am Matthew Fasig. I'm the Public Works Engineer, and I'm here to answer questions that you might have on these grant opportunities.
Chairman Kush?
Matthew, for most of us who are not aware of this particular set of properties, why don't you start from the beginning and kind of give us a background of how we got to this point?
Okay, so we had a, we were notified by the Emergency Management Agency that TMA had reached out to them about some grant opportunities. We met in October and discussed them, and there's kind of a short turnaround on these two particular grants for this year's cycle. They let us know there's more than usual funds available this year and recommended that we apply for properties that were already identified by TMA as repetitive lost properties. Through the list that they gave us, we identified three that seemed like they had had claims in a recent timeframe. Now, there were some on their list that were much older. We eliminated those, meaning that they were insurance claims from quite a while ago. So anything from 2000 moving forward, we looked at, and there was three properties. That was the three properties on the Flood Mitigation Assistant Grant. The other properties were that they recommended, or any other properties that they were not aware of that we were aware of, have some flooding issues. And as the Public Works Engineer, and I'm kind of the first response when people have a flooding situation at their house, they can call the engineering or Public Works Department. I'm the one that goes out and looks at those and tries to evaluate a solution. So I identified seven properties that I feel there's not a reasonable solution there to help those homeowners come to a conclusion on resolving their drainage issue. So I recommended seven properties. We went to the property management meeting in late October and started moving forward with a pre-application that was due October 31st. We then carried on to budget and finance earlier this month. And the final application deadline for this cycle is November 30th. And that's where we're at today, is asking for the right to apply for these grants and to move forward in trying to provide assistance to some residents that their drainage issues cannot be resolved.
Mr. Johnson?
Matthew, would you please repeat your name for the record, fail to get it on record, okay?
Of course. My name is Matthew Fasig, and I'm the Public Works Engineer. Yes, sir, F-A-S-I-G.
Okay, I addressed this in the Budget Committee the other night. And I feel we have a moral obligation. This is just an application, okay? If this is voted down tonight, it'll be a moot point, because the expiration will come around. When is the expiration date, Matthew?
November 30th is our deadline application date.
Okay, we will not have another meeting in time to do this. So what I was talking about, the moral obligation, this was addressed by Chairman P. there earlier. We don't necessarily need to be held for the sins of our fathers, but there was some goof up somewhere along the way that you brought up, Chairman P., back when this, some of these properties was approved prior. Is that correct? In the Planning Commission, somewhere along the way, is that right, Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I voted for it, and if we go ahead and vote for it, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend the money. That doesn't necessarily mean that the application is going to be approved. If the application is approved, then we'll have time to beat that dead horse to death if we need to. But I'm saying that we have a little bit of a moral obligation. And we're not really setting a precedent, because we have done this in the past. We have paid for some units out in the Water Hill area that was really, had some flooding problems. So I will be voting yes on this.
Let me call on Commissioner Gammon first.
Matthew, remember the meeting, there was only a few homeowners that were eligible for this or applied for it. Is that correct?
Correct. So I sent a short turnaround on this, but I sent out 10 letters to 10 different homeowners, and I received more or less an immediate response from four residents. And since that time, I've not heard from the other six, and that's been over two weeks.
I understand also, after we've, if we vote yes on this, the other homeowners that have not signified that they want to be involved, they cannot, they cannot participate. Is that correct?
I think with how the resolution is worded, that, how the resolution is worded is for the total amounts. But if they do not respond soon, and what I was really looking at when we sent an email today to Mayor Ketchum is that it is a lengthy application. We need them to respond very quickly.
They have a deadline?
We have the application deadline of November 30th. And so we need some time to prepare those applications. So at this point in time, it'll be very difficult to include any additional applicants.
Thank you, Matthew.
Chairman P.?
Question, actually, I'll go back to Josh, and I'm sorry, I didn't know this was going to come up, or I'd have said something sooner. These spaces will not be able to be built on, we're aware of that. But I think that we could use them as green space, is my understanding. Now, here's my question to you, and you were actually our attorney when I was in planning, so hopefully you'll be on this. Would it be possible for us to offer to the subdivisions where these are located this green space for, say, if there's a homeowners association, could they possibly take this over? over? That way, that would do away with the county's part of mowing them, and that would give these people the opportunity to, say, have a park or something in their neighborhood. I'm just curious if that's a possibility, and you may not be able to answer that, but...
Well, I haven't seen these specific grant applications, so if there are restrictions in the grant that would prohibit something like that and actually requires the county to retain the property, then no. But if there is no prohibition in the grant itself, I don't know of anything that would prohibit the county from making that offer. I don't, obviously, I can't speak to whether or not an HOA would take the property for green space. But I do recall one or two other instances in the past where the county did, this has been some time, did buy some property through a FEMA grant, and my recollection of those grant applications, and maybe you know one way or the other, Matthew, but was that the county was required to retain those properties. I think they had to mow down the houses and keep them. Now, this could be different, but I remember, I'm almost certain that those had that obligation.
But that'd be good information for us to get, if this was to pass, so.
I've got Commissioner Percy and then Commissioner Harris. Commissioner.
Come on.
Yes, sir.
I guess I would have the question for Matthews. Like Rob, Mr. Stevens, the other night on the Budget Committee, I couldn't support this either. I can't really see easing the burden of three people and putting the rest of it on the entire county. Is there any, is there any way possible that the county could buy the homes, demolish the homes, and leave the homeowner their property without actually taking the property from them and let them keep the upkeep, the tax, just keep it on the tax rate, and the liability? Is that possible?
My understanding of the question is you're asking if, can the home be demolished but the legal rights of the property be left with the homeowner?
Correct.
As my understanding with the particular grants and how they are written, that is not the case. In order to give the legal right for us to come in and demolish the home and give them a recoup value, it requires us to have a transaction of selling the property to the county.
Turn around and either give it back to them or sell it to them for $1.
That I do not know, but I would assume if you, if you, if the county has the property and then would like to sell it, it would be open to more than one resident, but I think it would be open not just to, I don't think you can buy it and then just turn around and sell it back to that one individual. I think you'd have to have some sort of bid process or some sort of, something, some sort of process there to make that legal, to open it up. So if the county is selling the property, then it would be open to any person to buy.
I just, I really can't see us putting the burden of these properties on our county forever, because it's not going to go away. If we can't sell it back to the homeowner or adjoining properties, we've got to keep it up. We lose it off the tax book, and then we've got to pay the liability insurance for the neighborhood kids to play on or whatever. And I won't be able to support it again tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Matthew, I got two, I got a couple of questions. Now, we, on seven houses, we had to pay up to $287,000, is that correct? Okay, what in your experience would it cost to demolish seven houses?
We did our best to estimate the cost of the homes, the property values of those homes through the property assessor, and then we estimated the cost to tear down those homes and then to carry the demolition, the actual raw materials, to a dump site, so...
You have any close idea, or, because right now, we're looking at $287,000 plus we got to tear down the properties.
No, it's included in.
It is included in, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then, to answer Mr. Gurley earlier, do you know if we can use that property as a park or anything like that?
Historically, our county has not chose to do that. It is my understanding with the same type of grants, and from my understanding, I don't know this rock solid, but Metro Nashville does take properties such as from the 2010 flood. They took multiple properties and turned those into green spaces for their residents. As far as I know, though, our county has not done that, and I cannot with absolutely certainty tell you that is the case with these two grants. But if it went historically as the other grants have gone in recent years, then I would say that answer would be yes.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, you know, there's, in times past, there's been a lot of mistakes made in this county as far as building. There was a whole swamp drained right by where I live called Beatty Swamp. Built a bunch of houses in it. The county maintains a large, well, the county will maintain part of that ditch the county was maintaining. Now, that ditch is split between the town of Smyrna and Rutherford County in terms of maintaining that 10 or 15-foot ditch that was dug there to drain, keep Beatty Swamp drained perpetually all the way to Rocky Fort Branch. So there were a lot of mistakes made in years gone by before we had codes and all that. And I don't know that we can, you know, a lot of it's poor judgment on the, on the property owner's part. I saw that as things were being developed out my way. You could tell people, hey, this is going to flood, but no, I hadn't seen any water there in six months, and they built anyway, and then the first big rain, they were flooded. So I don't know that we can go back and correct all the property owner's mistakes and assume all the liability, so I'm probably going to be voting no on this.
Chairman Turner.
All right, procedure on the question being called, it's not debatable. All in favor of the question being called? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original motion.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Back on the original motion, based on the resolution. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second. All in favor?
We need to go on the board.
Roll call vote.
Yeah, roll call vote. Let's just do a roll call.
Everyone cast your vote. Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
14 yes, 7 no. Motion passes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health Department, Health and Education Committee, no report. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works Committee and Planning Committee, no report. Steering Legislative Governmental Committee, no report. Members, today, the Insurance Committee met. We'll see this award. It's a nice piece of glass. But this was given to Rutherford County by Cigna. Cigna writes all of our hospitalization major medical for our employees. This is the Rutherford County Employee Benefit Trust 2018 Cigna Well-Being Award. Outstanding culture of well-being, meaning that, now, the folks from Cigna led me to believe that we were the only one that got this. I hope that they were telling us the truth, that we are the best wellness-being county in the state, but we certainly appreciate that, and congratulations to all of our employees for thinking about and taking care of theirselves, because it really, when you try to prevent disease and take care of yourself and stay healthy, it reduces our, the impact that we have to pay from our hospitalization major medical. So congratulations to our Insurance Committee and all those from Cigna, and for all the employees for taking care of themselves. Statements and announcements. Chairman P.
This Saturday, the 17th, between 6:00 and 10:00, there'll be a country ham breakfast at Ketchikan Volunteer Fire Department. Also, during that same period, there'll be a turkey shoot, so bring your shotguns along.
Bring your shotgun and eat the turkey, right? And the ham. Chairman Allen.
I have three things I want to announce. The Smyrna Christmas Parade is Sunday, December the 2nd, and that is at 2:00. And I think they're still accepting applications. If you want to enter a float, just contact City Hall. We're also hosting Santa at the depot. It's called the Front Street Christmas, and that is the following Saturday. It's December the 8th. It's an evening event. It's from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have carriage rides and smores and carolers, fire pits, there's arts and crafts, there's just too much fun to be had. So anyway, so come out there for that, it's a lot of fun. Last thing is, on a more serious note, there is a rezoning meeting, for anybody that's interested, on December the 3rd at Stewart's Creek High School at 6:30. So, and there's a lot of discussion about the rezoning that's going to be taking place for the high school, for Rockville, and just kind of the ripple effect that that's creating. So if anybody's interested, it's December the 3rd, 6:30 Stewart's Creek High School.
Thank you, Chairman. No other statements and announcements. Chairman Reed.
I've got another announcement for the diamond in the west. The Iggleville Lions Club is having a turkey shoot this Saturday, starting at 8:30, and if you've already got your turkey for Thanksgiving, we're also shooting for hams, bacon, and pocket knives out that way. So we'd like to have everybody come on out to Iggleville out at Sandy's Market, and we guarantee you a good time.
Chairman Kus.
For those of you who still have some Christmas shopping to do, I know the date has not been set yet, but Deputy to the Mayor Steve Sandlin will be autographing some 8-by-10 glossies of his recent appearance in the Miranda Lambert video. Has anybody seen that yet? Raise your hands if you've seen Steve.
If you'll hang on, after we adjourn, go off TV, we'll show it, because of copyrights. We'll show it to everybody tonight.
Steve has a future, let me tell you. So I'm sure you'll be setting up a table in front of the courthouse and doing autographs for all those who are looking for some Christmas.
All right, Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, in the holiday spirit, there will be a holiday marketplace at Stewart's Creek High School this Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00, I believe. Plenty of parking, and normally, there are over 100 vendors there, and a good selection of crafts, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Members, mark your calendar for December the 6th at 6:00? 7:00, I'm sorry, 7:00, December 6th. All right, I got it reversed. Okay, December the 7th at 6:00, mark your calendars. We'll be having the official tree lighting out here on the Courthouse Square. Santa will arrive in one of our Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue trucks, and for all the entertainment, we'll have a stage set up. I think there's a lot of entertainment, caroling, et cetera. Then Santa will be escorted inside, and we'll have his chair, and so bring all your kids, grandkids, and et cetera, and if you want to sit on Santa's lap and tell him what you want, we'll take a picture of that also, and use it against you at some point in time. But I think that'll be a good time. We should have several hundred people. Hopefully, the weather will be good for us at night, but that's December 7th at 6:00. Also, I want to take a moment to recognize Ben Manken and his crew, and also Brian Robertson and his crew. Members, you see our new voting boards. These are, hopefully, they're very viewable, but the work that went in, the wire that they had to run, started way up there, and the cabling that came down to this junction box inside that door and up through the walls. Though they spent a lot of time getting those things set, but I think it's an added addition to our chamber. And especially Ben Manken, he decided what to do here, and we were really concerned about our wallpaper. And of course, the wallpaper was put in back in the 90s, and he had an original piece of the wallpaper, and it was about seven shades darker than what this is. So over the years, this has kind of bleached out. So he and his painter, the painter, did a fantastic job. Brian, thanks for getting hooked up, and all the applications, and your crew putting it all together for your voting board. But also for Ben's painter, because he actually painted it, took it down to Hoover, got them to match the same color as it is today with paint. We painted behind it, because it left a blank sheet rock, and we had to, we had to sand it and everything else. And then he cut a stencil, drew a stencil, the same as those little emblems that are on there, and took a sponge, and got the same color, and did a fantastic job of keeping the historical look within the chamber. So my hat's off to both of them, and we should, when you see them, tell them thank you to Ben Manken, Brian Robertson, and both of their departments for a job well done. Okay, before I adjourn, I want to say that just stay in your seats, because we've got a little highlight for you. Miranda Lambert came in three, four weeks ago, and she and the Pistol Annies, they were actually on, I believe they were on Good Morning America just last week with this new video, and it was filmed right here in Murfreesboro. They, it goes wrong about her getting her name back, and, you know, after her divorce and whatever, it's country music, but they went down to our clerk's office, and I think Lisa, she, you should have seen the expression on Lisa's face, because they used a lot of confetti guns, and when they blew that confetti, it went everywhere, all over the clerk's office, and her mouth stayed open for five minutes. I know Jeff was just going to look at her face, you know, she was just shocked, but they did a good job cleaning it up. And thank you for all your employees for doing that. Then they came here, and inside the video, you'll see here in a minute, inside downstairs, they used our foyer inside the courthouse, walking out the steps. And then they went over to the old judicial building up into the courtroom, just like a courtroom, and so they grabbed a lot of, a lot of folks, Rob that works for Ben Manken, he was up in the jury box, and when Miranda Lambert saw Deputy to the Mayor Sandlin, he and his son had just come by from out, they were going to go dove hunting, but they decided to sight their rifles in that day, and they had camo on, okay? So they came walking in with camo just to observe. Miranda goes, I want that guy in the camo in the video. So if you ever want to be in a video, just wear camo, because it worked out perfect, and you'll see him here in a minute. So any other announcements, statements, and announcements? We wish you, Commissioner.
I really probably shouldn't do this, because my wife will probably kill me until the Lord I died. I'm going to tell it anyway, because she's not very, anyway. The 20th of this month, I will be celebrating my 81st birthday.
Congratulations.
And I'm just so thankful that I am where I am at this stage in my life and able to be a part of this August body, and I just appreciate everybody, and just pray for me that I'll live five more days. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, congratulations on your birthday, your age, you don't look anywhere close to that. Congratulations on being married to your wife, she's kept you that long, and thank you for being a member of this August body and a December body as well, so we appreciate that. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a safe and prosperous holiday. Be safe. If nothing else to come before us, remember, just give us three minutes to watch this video, but nothing else to come before us, we'll stand and adjournment, and then cue it up. Brian, you ready? We stand adjourned.